Let's call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda would be roll call. I'll call out your names by district number. Cheryl, you here?
Here.
Joe?
President.
Yeah, Joe Persky.
Alrighty, Jeff Mergan, you here?
I'm here.
Jeff, are you here?
I am.
Okay, I'm here. Steve Notch, are you here?
Here.
Alrighty.
So that everybody knows Randy is also on the line. I don't think we have anybody else on line, do we? Okay.
Alright. You want to do the pledge of allegiance? That's what we normally do. Alright, alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Any kindergarten class would be proud of us. Let's see, the consent agenda. One, Randy, will you explain your idea on the liquor license applicant situation?
Sure. So, renewals are coming up and they're for July 1st through June 30th time period. And with the bars being closed now from March 17th until May 1st, we gave them, or we're looking to give them their fees back for a two-month period and reduce their next year's fees. So apply the reduction for the time they're not being open to the reduction in their fees for next year.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions or want further explanation on that? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, this is Steve, and I'm just wondering if, could we wait on it until another month? Because what if they extend it?
We normally send out renew- Yeah, we're about a week behind in sending out renewals right now. So we send them out, there's a number of approvals they have to get from the township. And they have to get, you know, their liquor liability. And we have to run it past the county attorney and the sheriff. So there's a pretty big process. Yeah, I did do a two-month reduction, Steve. And right now they're scheduled to be down for a month and a half. So I did build in a little extra there for them.
Okay, is Steve here again? And I'm sure we can always adjust if it ends up being extended into the next period, huh?
We can, yeah. We can, if they do pay it, we can refund it. Or if we hear something else, you know, if you give me authority to adjust as we go, I can do that.
Well, that's a good idea.
It is. Can we-
I'll go ahead and amend that emotion. If you want to make any adjustments before you have to, you're allowed to do that.
Okay.
Do we need to pull that item off the consent agenda? Or can we modify the consent agenda and-
I don't think you pull it off. I think you note the modifications and approve it.
Okay.
This is Jeff.
I'll go back.
I have a question for Mike. I was wondering if the establishment we talked about was ever able to get in contact with him?
No, I left a message with them last week and haven't heard back yet.
Okay, thanks.
I can give another try, too.
Okay, thank you.
Probably because of-
Second Joe's motion. Steve.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Alright. Let's get an update on our unique societal adventure here. We have Renee Fromd East and Erin Tufti to talk about. Go ahead.
Renee Fromd East and the Public Health Division Director for Stearns County.
And Erin Tufti, Stearns County Emergency Manager.
So what Erin and I thought we would do this morning is just sort of give you an update on what we're seeing as far as numbers, kind of across the world. Talk a little bit about what this most recent shelter in place by the governor, what the goal is for that.
Commissioners, can you hear Renee and Erin?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Frank's a little louder.
Alright.
And then lastly, just talk a little bit about what's been going on in the Emergency Operations Center, kind of where our focus has been. And then also just some of the things that we're seeing happen across the county that we think you'd be interested in. So as of yesterday, the World Health Organization had shared with us that we have almost 738,000 cases across the world. In the United States, we're at about 143,000, which is almost 20% of what the world's total numbers have been. Minnesota yesterday reported 503 of those individuals. 252 no longer need to be in isolation. So about 50% of our cases have actually gone through the process and have either moved out of isolation or are yet still isolated. And we've had almost 18,000 individuals tested in Minnesota. Unfortunately, we have had nine deaths. Yesterday, they identified nine. And of those nine, seven of them actually were individuals that were associated with long-term care facility. So it just highlights, I think, for us the high vulnerability of our older adults in our community and how important it is that these long-term care facilities, which in Stearns County have done just an excellent job of really clamping down on people coming in and out of those locations in order to protect that vulnerable population. We have 45 counties across Minnesota. That's more than 50% of the total number of counties in Minnesota. We have 75 individuals who've required hospitalization. And right now, we have 39 who are in the hospital. So the soft, what I'm going to call soft shelter in place, that was put into place at 11:59 yesterday, or on Friday of last year. Basically, what they've done is they've actually looked at different algorithms to look to see how can they extend that peak out in order for us to build more capacity around being able to care for the sick. So they feel that by moving into this, what they're calling soft sheltering in place, we will actually extend that peak out another five to six weeks. That's actually allowing us at the local level here to work with our healthcare provider to identify alternate care sites so that we can build capacity to meet that potential surge that's out there. And Erin will talk a little bit about kind of what we've been working on with that.
Good morning. So we have four main areas that we're working on right now in the Emergency Operations Center. The first is continuing to staff the hotline. And I should say that these efforts are being coordinated through the Emergency Operations Center. That hotline is being done virtually right now. It is no longer located onsite. So all of the staff are working from an off-site location but continue to provide that service. And just in case anyone needs that number for the hotline, it is 877-782-5683. And we are continuing to staff that Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30 in cooperation with Benton County as well. Next, we are starting to focus this week per the governor's executive order to assist the healthcare community in establishing alternate care sites. What that means, we're still working with Centricare and our local partners to determine how we might be able to provide support to them as they look to expand their healthcare capacity. As you may remember, the governor had asked to have an additional 2,700 hospital beds. And so that is part of that effort, those alternate care facilities. The third component that we're working on is working with our vulnerable populations throughout the county to make sure that we have processes in place to address their specific needs, any sheltering that may need to be done, and how we work with them moving forward. We have determined that the best way we can do that is a four-county effort. And so in cooperation with Benton County, Wright County, and Sherburne County, we are working collectively to put those efforts into place. We're hoping to finalize those activities today so that we're ready to go moving forward. And then lastly, we continue to work with donations. And I think it's important to note that we have certainly asked for healthcare donations. If people have N95 respirators, any surgical masks, scrubs, face shields, different things that they are able to donate for the health community, as well as people who are wanting to make masks to provide, we've had very generous donations. In the first few days that we were collecting them, we had over 1,200 handmade masks donated. And we want to continue to ask people for their help in being able to do so. If you're interested in making donations, we ask that you call the hotline as we're working on a coordinated effort with our cities to be able to come to you to pick up those items. And as well, the last note, we're a generous county. We know that, that people care about each other, that people want to help in different ways, and we're seeing that in the requests that we're making for assistance. We are getting unsolicited offers for people to provide facilities, staffing in different ways. And so we're really appreciative of all of that effort from across the county.
Okay. Commissioners, are you able to hear the presentation effectively? Well, this is encouraging. Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Erin's breaking up a little bit here.
Okay. Quit breaking up, Erin. There, I took care of it. How about the rest of you? I presume silence, although totally unexpected, means that you're hearing just fine. Okay.
Much fine. Thank you.
Let me do, Mr. Chair, let me just do one thing that probably we should have done in the beginning. One thing that we needed to do was make sure everybody could hear, and I'm glad you continue to ask that. But just to tell the public that we're meeting this way because state law allows us during times of a pandemic, if that's been declared, to meet electronically. The law requires at least one person from the board or the chief administrative officer be in the boardroom. And so we've met our legal obligations there and everybody can hear. And I just wanted, we really should announce that. And so we do have, as the roll call indicated, four commissioners phoning in. And the other thing that we need to do, and I neglected to do it on the first vote, we need to do every vote by roll call, Mr. Chair.
Yep, makes sense.
Now, there were no nays first, so we did know that. But when we vote on the couple of other things, I can call the roll.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, and Mike, can you also just reinforce for the public that you all are properly socially listed?
We are. Everybody is well, well over six feet apart in the room. And most of them will be going home after this meeting.
Mr. Chair, if we could just maybe add, one of the things that we're working on right now is to even get the Emergency Operations Center virtual as well. Right now, we have just a small group of people that are down in the Emergency Operations Center, but our goal really is to get that even virtual.
Okay. Renee, you mentioned, I think you were alluding to a treatment process. And you said that a number of people have been through the process. Can you describe the process, whatever it means?
Yeah, the process is pretty straightforward. It's isolation until you no longer either have any symptoms for a specific period of time or no fever and no symptoms for a specific period of time. And you're no longer considered infectious, and so you can move out of isolation, so.
Alright, alright. Anything else about this adventure we're on?
About this?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that was feedback.
Oh, it's feedback, okay. I didn't know she was on the board.
First, I've got a question.
Yep.
Renee and Erin, I heard that Alexandria folks are actually going to be treated at the St. Cloud Hospital. As far as the care center for those folks that are severely affected by the virus and treatment from St. Cloud, how far outreaching is St. Cloud going to be as far as the use of that facility?
Mr. Chair, I'm not really sure that we know exactly what that looks like. I do know that the healthcare coalitions across the state, I think, are trying to coordinate. And some of it depends on your ability to have the resources that are available. So, and Erin can maybe add in here, but I do know over the weekend, as Erin was trying to coordinate, some agents or some counties don't have the facilities that the state is actually looking for. And so they may end up in areas where resources are more available and not being able to treat within their particular area. So, and I'm assuming Alexandria has reached out to Centricare to say, you know, we can do this, but we can't do that. Can we get our people over to your facility, so?
Yes, I would agree. I think very similar to we have public health regions and emergency management regions, the hospitals have regions as well. And they're working to be able to maximize the resources that are available to be able to best serve the needs of the public. And so that coordination is absolutely taking place.
Anything else?
Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff, I have a question for Renee and Erin. Is there any way to find out how many hospital beds have been available in Stearns County, let's say, each year since 2010 and up to the current?
Well, I can tell you that they are doing daily counts of that so that the state of Minnesota has requested that each hospital provide on a daily basis the bed availability. I don't, I'm sure that with some work, we would be able to determine what that average might be or what it is on an annual basis. But they are actively reporting that information daily to be able to have an appreciation of what is available.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, what they are working on, so for example, St. Cloud Hospital has canceled all elective surgeries, which end up freeing up hospital beds. So I think if you look at what their average hospital bed is on an annual basis, and like Erin said, we can certainly see if we can get that. And what you're seeing now is there's a lot more bed availability because they have deliberately pushed things out in order for them to create that capacity and ready themselves for surge.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so you've described the process, the typical process for someone who has been tested and they found that there's concern. So that's helpful. Also, I was encouraged to hear that you've come up with a solution. I've worked, well, I did a sit-along a couple of times over the number of years I've been around in the 911 center, and I'm glad you've come up with a solution because those folks literally are. If they sat any closer together, they'd be operating off of each other's laps. So I'm glad you figured out something for those folks to spread out. Let's see. Anymore? If you don't have anything else, our next item, I guess, would be Dr. Willie adopting the resolution supporting the governor's executive order?
Thank you.
Lee, I have one more question. Joe Persky. Erin and Renee, thank you for all the work you're doing. I greatly appreciate it. Say, do we, how about as far as protective personal equipment? Do we have everybody as far as being on board, being able to have gloves and masks and gowns as far as those that are, you know, with the sheriff's department, jail, even homeless shelters in the areas we need? Do we have any shortages?
Well, I think all of personal protective equipment across the world actually is in short supply. And I think part of the governor's initiative in this two-week time period is to also try to get and build up that personal protective equipment, testing, and then obviously the bed capacity, and move those things so that we have those when we hit that peak. We do have a good cash available in this area, and Erin's done just an excellent job in helping manage not only receiving additional items, but looking at how do we get those items out? And I don't know, Erin, if you want to add?
I think that one of the things that's important, we have a local cache of supplies, and part of that is the donations from the community. So if we exhaust the resources that we have on hand at the department level or at the county level, we then move on to the healthcare coalition. And we ask the healthcare coalition for that supply, whether that be surgical masks or these N95 respirators, to say, here's where our need is. If they can't fill those requests or don't have the supply, at that point, we move up to the state. And the state has a cache of supplies. We have heard a little bit about the strategic national stockpile and resources being made available through the federal government. So it's kind of a tiered approach. So while we may not specifically have something on hand, it doesn't mean that if we reached out to the region or the state that we might not be able to get it. I think going hand-in-hand with that PPE is also the education and guidance and making sure that we're doing our part to continue to provide that education for the end user of these are the situations under which you need to use personal protective equipment. Here's how you use it safely and what those protocols look for. And in some cases, that's helped us to be able to better stretch our supply as people understand the different situations they may encounter, which have the necessity for that PPE.
That way, we know that people that are using the personal protective equipment are using it appropriately and we're not wasting it in an inappropriate way. And yet still protecting the people as best as we can. So these supplies, though, are going to be an issue, I think, ongoing. It's just we don't have an endless supply. And so us using our personal protective equipment to the best that we can is what our goal has been.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on here.
You gonna leave again?
Yeah. One more time.
Yeah, this is part of your aerobics program, you know? Front of the room, back of the room, front of the room, back of the room. Okay. Dr. Willie, you want to take us through this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. You have a resolution in front of you that really directs, the board directs county staff to implement the governor's most recent executive order, which did allow priority services to continue and non-priority services to continue if we could do them, you know, in off-site methods. And we've basically implemented this already. We have very few people working in the administration building and very few people working at the West Service Center. I would say less than 30 in both buildings, something like that. I'm not exactly sure. We've done that with, of course, most people are working out of their home because they have a laptop or we got them a laptop or we got them the equipment they needed to work at home. And others have been rearranged and reassigned in certain areas. So that first, the first part of that resolution directs us to do that, and I can assure you that we are doing that. The second part of it does implement a paid time-off advance program, we've called it. If you recall, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act allowed two weeks of paid sick time for people that are impacted by the COVID-19. And then it has another 10 weeks of leave that is partially paid, two-thirds paid. And so of course, that's available to most of our employees. But we also wanted to institute this program where we can advance our employees' PTO in the event that they need more PTO due to the COVID-19 crisis. And so what this does is, if someone wanted to, if someone requested that today, we would calculate what their leave would have been up to the end of the year and put that in their balance so that they have ample time off if necessary. And so this combined with some of our other programs, we also have an extended time-off or extended leave policy that we are re-advertising to our employees, which is a way for employee to work less but not lose benefits. And we have a few other programs as well. And so we rolled all those out to our employees. And so that is, in a nutshell, what this resolution does. And of course, we're prepared to keep our people working wherever they are today, not in these buildings, for the duration of the governor's order. And that's all I have.
This is Cheryl. I'll move as to adopting this resolution, and then I have a question after there's a second.
Okay, is there a second to Cheryl's motion? I'll second it.
Yes, I'll second.
Oh, Jeff seconds it. Thank you, Jeff. I could barely stand the suspense. Go ahead, and what's the question?
Just really quickly, Mike, this would be more for the public. I know you've let us know. Can you just talk briefly about the work with the union business partners during this time and putting this together?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner Clark.
My understanding from what you've communicated is as changes have had to be made because of a pandemic, you have had communication with the union reps along the way on this. And I just think it's important for the public to know this same communication.
Thank you, yes. Our human resources director has been in communication, I believe, with all of our unions, and they are all at least verbally supportive of this. And we have memorandums of understanding being implemented or signed as we speak.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for all the work on this. It's a lot.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, can we vote on this? We'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, starting with Cheryl.
Aye.
Okay. Joe?
Aye.
Okay, Jeff?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay. And then our next item would be the advancement program that's referenced in the agenda?
Yeah, the next item is the use of some revolving loan funds by the HRA and Stearns County. And so the HRA board approved, well, I'll back up. These are, at one time, were deed dollars that were enacted by either the HRA or Stearns County and used as revolving loan funds for business expansions. And the dollars have been hanging around for quite a while, actually. The county holds approximately $450,000. The HRA owns about $100,000, and then a few cities have about $35,000. And what deed has done in one of the most recent changes or one of the recent packages passed by the legislator, deed has loosened up the use of these funds so that we can use them in a revolving loan fund in an emergency way, which we wouldn't be able to use the money this way otherwise. And so the HRA board adopted a resolution on Thursday or Friday that set this loan program in place. And I attended that meeting via phone and told them that I would be recommending that we use, that we match the dollars that the HRA has and that the three cities hold in the amount of $135,000. I said that I would bring that to the board. And so what the plan is with these dollars is for businesses that have been closed because of the crisis, they would, they could get a small loan, up to $5,000 through the HRA. And it would be no interest loan, no payment for six months, and then a two-year payback. And realizing that there's some, there are some other programs that are coming from deed and the SBA, but we don't know how fast those dollars will be able to be loaned out or given out. And so we think this is a good program because the HRA can administer this quickly. And in the event that a recipient of one of these loans does get some deed funding or SBA funding, then they could pay that back through those loans. And so it could end up even being a little bit of a bridge loan before they can access some of those other funds. Because some of those other funds are a little more attractive. One of the deed loans, it's actually, 50% gets forgiven if the rest is paid back. So these businesses will likely want to access those deed funds as well. So there's no resolution to adopt, it's just a motion. And the HRA will administer the revolving loan fund, much like they always have. Very little of our, actually, none of our $450,000 is committed. And I think we only have one loan that's active right now, being paid back.
Okay, any questions about this program? Anybody? If not- If not, a motion to approve the use of this would be appropriate?
I'm moved to approve. This is Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second by Steve.
Ah, thank you, Steve. All those in favor say aye by district. Terrell?
Aye.
Okay, Joe?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Any, anything else for the good of the order here?
No, sir.
The only thing that, the only question I, I've got is, was it last Wednesday, the governor's news conference? The first question, after he announced all of the entities that he ordered to close for the duration of this emergency, the first question from the media, the very first question was, are the liquor stores allowed to be open? And I guess I would, I'm, I'm wondering if it, there's any merit in asking staff to find out if that particular reporter happened to be born and raised in Stearns County, maybe we should establish Minnesota Thirteen Award for the media keeping priorities straight. So, you know, we could get Beaver Island or Third Street Brewery to sponsor this. We could make this a real event. Well, if you have spare time, you might want to check that out. I thought that was, I couldn't pass that up. Obviously, there was a reporter there that had a concern. But anyway, if there's nothing else that we need to bring up, Dr. Willie, do you have the appropriate authority on a very short term to move as you see fit on anything?
We do. We do. The emergency declaration that the board adopted, whenever that was, a week and a half ago, maybe, time's flying, and the action today, I think, gives us the authority to, to do what we need to do. And if not, if not, we'll have another meeting like this, but I really don't think it's going to be necessary.
Okay, all right. Even though this-
This, Sally, Joe, Joe Persky. Mike, what, could you just clarify with the, the emergency meeting, what's the protocol on that so the public understands?
For the, for, well, we were able to give adequate, geez, we were able to give adequate notice for this, but if we do call an emergency meeting, we only need to give 24 hours notice. And we can meet in this electronic format because of the pandemic. We just need to have one member of the board or the chief administrative officer or legal counsel in the boardroom. So, which is what we did today. Is that what you were looking for, Joe?
Okay, anything else?
And then, and then, we, we will not meet unless we have another emergency meeting on, which would then be April 21st?
Correct.
I, I just had a quick question maybe for administration. This is Steve. This agenda wasn't online yet, has it?
Yes, yes, it was. It was.
Yes.
Oh, I just looked because I was going to log on before, and I didn't see it.
Should have been. I'm sure it was.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yes, I logged it online too.
Yeah.
Oh, did you? Okay.
All right.
Yeah, now, the, all, our, all our normal media notifications went out last week, and it was posted online and as you, and it was all in our folders. So, all, all that kind of happens at the same time.
I got, my first one on my list is March 31st, Woodland rules. Oh, there it is. Oh, past meeting. Well, that's why. It's in the past meeting.
You were supposed to be adjourned by now.
And you made, you made a mental note, and you lost your notes, right? All right.
Yeah.
If you got anything else? Anything else by anyone? If not, I'm just going to go ahead and adjourn this. A motion to adjourn and do roll call, I think, is a declaration of the obvious, so, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This went way better than I thought.
Take care, everyone.